Things started and we are being recorded. Um, can I get a roll call of planning commissioners present, please?
It's air.
Oil here.
Here.
Well, by the year here.
Perfect. Lind here. So I think we have everybody except Abby probably still. Um, in any county commissioners here yet? Sorry, I'm not scrolling through you here. Okay. Um, any changes or additions to the agenda? Um, I have one, I just, uh, there's a work session that's listed at the bottom of our back country zone district. Which I'm not sure if it's totally regarding back country. But it's a work session with the county commissioners and so we should probably chat about that separate from the back country zone district. So I don't know if we want to talk about that after we talk about the Angel View subdivision preliminary plat. And then any other changes or additions? Okay. We will move on to new business. We have file two zero dash one nine. That's Angel View subdivision preliminary plan review. And I know I was copied on a couple of things that sounds like we're requesting to table this. To a March date. Paul, do you want to, or Paul or Ann want to give us the details on that?
I can, I can do that Heather. Um, we have not received their preliminary revisions yet. So we um, are hoping that we will have that sometime this week. They had initially thought that it would be Friday. But unfortunately that didn't happen. So we would suggest to allow enough time in case we do have to send it back to engineering review. To table to a date certain of March twenty second. That will allow staff and enough time to take the revisions in properly vet them and send them back out for engineering review if need be. So our recommendation is to table until March twenty second. Um, and if we're able to meet that date, then the applicant will not have to renotice the file. If we get to the twenty second and we are not, no longer ready, then we will have to start over by noticing the file again. But hopefully, I think we do have a confidence, at least at this point, of hoping to be ready by March twenty second.
Sorry, an applicant is aware and fine with that date as well?
Correct. Yes, we had a communication with their attorney on Friday and a little bit with the team. That they are aware of that. We had kind of hoped for March eighth, but they recognized that, you know, they would have had to have gotten their revisions into us by now and we don't have them yet.
Okay.
That was one of the emails that you received Heather is confirmation from the applicant that March twenty second is works.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we put it out there here in this meeting. Um, anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to table the Angel View subdivision preliminary plan to March twenty second?
I'll make the motion to table file twenty nineteen till March twenty second.
Okay, can I get a second?
Foil second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, if you can say aye please?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, let's go ahead and chat quickly about the work session with the county commissioners that's happening tomorrow. Um, and I'll let Ann introduce.
I'm sure. So, um, we got the agenda today. Happy to email it over to everyone. Land use discussion and building department discussion is the last thing on the agenda. Um, and it's not really broken out, but I, I do anticipate that there will be, um, although not completely sure. Um, I don't know if we have any commissioners that have joined us yet, um, but the potentially, uh, there will be some discussion on prioritization of land use. Topics and, and thoughts. So, um, I would just suggest to anyone that would have availability tomorrow at one o'clock to, um, join. Again, it's, it's towards the, it's the last item on the agenda. So, um, you know, if anybody wanted to have me text them, you know, like if your day is kind of busy and you say, geez, I'd really like to listen in. If you just give me an email and say, hey, could you text me a few minutes before, um, the discussion starts? I'd be happy to do that because sometimes it's hard to sit on, um, you know, if there's other things on the agenda that you're really not want to be present for and you're trying to multitask or something. So just, just shoot me an email, um, with your, the best number for me to send you a text at, and I would be happy to do that tomorrow if you would like to join in. And Paul, if you have any ideas about tomorrow too, I, I, I don't know specific topics yet.
Well, it's, it's going to be, uh, it's on the board's agenda as operational discussion. But there are several issues along, uh, that the board would like to discuss along with this back country zoning. So, um, and, and I don't really have a list of what those issues are. But one of the, one of the concerns that we, that Ann and I have is staff.
Sure.
Yeah, like more of it.
Okay, great. Thank you guys. Yes, I will try to be there, um, at one o'clock. Um, okay, let's, um, open back up the back country zone district recap stuff. I, um, had one of my midnight ideas of how to maybe engage in some more conversation on these things. So I'm going to share a different screen here with some questions that I just kind of would love for the planning commissioners and accounting commissioners once they join in. This, I feel like will help guide us as to what we're looking at, at, you know, how we move forward, um, from here. Um, so I have, the, the first question is, do you understand and agree with what the intentions are and the reasoning for pursuing a back country zoning option? If not, um, is there more information that you feel is needed or is it just simply a, hey, I don't, I don't really get it. I'm not really into this. I'd love to get some feedback there. And then, um, the second one was kind of a compilation of the things that we had identified in previous meetings that maybe were some concerns. And I don't know if some of these are still concerns for people or, um, that we want to talk about, um, with mitigation and or, uh, you know, changing things within the code that we have to address them. So I would love it if we could, um, each go through, uh, like I said, planning commissioners, uh, you know, first until we can get the county commissioners on. But, um, just like, love to get like the temperature and see where everybody's at as far as where, where their thoughts are and where they think we need to be focused as far as our discussions moving forward. I'm still don't know if I have a volunteer. Please don't make me call on you. I will though, I will call on you. Okay, Howard, you're first on my screen. You're going to go first.
We, you asked me if I understand and agree with the intentions?
Yes. And if there's anything about it that you don't, what needs to change?
No, I think I'm pretty well up to speed.
Okay. Are any of these topics still concerns or things that we need to further discuss or mitigate or change?
Uh, you know, number C, the gray water plans. I've kind of lost track of that. So I would be interested in discussing that.
Okay.
And then I'm not sure G, grade concerns. Is that talking about the road grades?
Yeah, there was some concerns that some of these, um, parcels would potentially fall in steep grade areas.
I'm also okay, okay with that.
Add your name. Okay to continue talking about it or you're okay with that discussion?
I think we should, we should continue talking about that. Yes.
Okay. Any others? Everything else look okay?
At this point, I think I'm all right.
Okay. Okay Bryce, you're next on my screen.
All right. Um, I definitely understand the intent and the need and the, you know, why we're doing this. I think going to letter A, I don't really have any concerns with the boundary. Just as the mapper, I'd like to maybe discuss that tonight. Go over the map, see what other people have to ta, uh, say about that. Um, you know, so that we can just hammer down that and so I can take those concerns and come back with either a revised boundary or something like that. Personally, I think I'm with Howard on, on C being something I, I think needs to be just more fleshed out, more hammered out. It was really enlightening to sit in on the variance meeting last week where Jackie actually kind of went through. A variance that was being approved for a back country hut. And I know that's separate because that was a commercial use hut, but it was good to get that perspective because that's what we're kind of expecting people to do. And so, um, just fleshing that out maybe a little bit more. I think we're getting closer. And then I think my, my big one is the H is the, is the roads and the access easements and discussing some, some lines in the sand, especially on access easements. You know, what kind of proof or agreements these owners need to do if they're going through someone else's land. And then just addressing what is a legal road and what isn't a legal road. Um, and how, how we're, mind us that as it comes up because I know we're not going to solve every issue or every instance of that as we're making the code. Um, and I guess was with along, you know, along with that is just the enforcement issue, how we're going to enforce when, when people don't follow the rules.
Okay, cool. Lupe, you're next on my screen.
So similar to us, everyone was saying, number one is pretty clear. We've been discussing that and, uh, see where the intentions and, uh, seen why, why this plan is being carried out. When they, for number two, boundary review for sure. I, I know like the last meeting, I stepped out a little bit early for class. But I, I would want to see more about the boundary review. And also I was curious more to learn more about the impact on tax base. Um, that's something that I was interested in wanting to hear more about the impact on, on tax base with the back country zone district. And as well as, um, as Bryce and Howard pointed out, great water plants, um, just hearing, uh, and almost getting a, a clear answer for, for the people. Uh, asking about the gray water plants at the back country zone district, but other than that, uh, pretty clear. Thanks Heather.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, Erin, you're next on my screen.
Um, just like everyone before me, uh, no issues with number one. I think our statement's really clear and it also really reflects the other areas around us. Number two. I might not just understand, um, the gray water plans and OWTS situation. But it doesn't seem like our purview, we direct people to environment, public and environmental health. And then it's within their coding and guidance that they get the variance and planning. So I'm not entirely sure what more we need to flesh out, but I could also just have a misunderstanding. It would be great to kind of increase that, but is that our area? I'm not sure. I also am new though. Um, the zone change impact on tax base is not a concern I personally have, but someone called me and brought that up. So maybe that should be discussed more. But again, that's not a personal concern. It just feels strange not to say someone brought it up to me. Um, grade concerns, mostly from my brain, like just avalanche concerns and what that would potentially mean for, um, rescue resources that would have to get up there. And then I'm interested to hear more about roads and access and easements. I don't know a lot about that.
Cool. Thank you. Steve, I don't have you on my screen, but I know you're out there somewhere. And I don't know if you can see me. Are you on the phone or are you logged in?
Yeah, I had to use my cell phone. My computer doesn't have audio.
Okay.
Uh, I'm on board with pretty much everything here. It's, um, it's been a long time to go over all these topics and, and have no concerns. But, uh, do agree with Bryce and Erin about the road access easements and we really haven't hit anything. What enforcement could be done on, uh, on such, um, on such, uh, all these different people that potentially want to be up there on the mining claim. Uh, nothing big, but, uh, just some more information about, well, how would we address those? And the easements, I think is probably going to be an issue too with, uh, different mining claims on top of each other. But, uh, everything else, I'm totally fine with.
Um, am I, there's a few things, a few photos on here. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Planning commissioners? No? And we don't have any county commissioners with us yet, do we? Okay.
Sounds like they're still going on for a while.
Yeah. Um, okay, I, um, there's a couple of things here that, that people didn't really pick as concern items on these questions. The transmission lines above ground below ground used by right versus a CUP. I felt good about it when we left the last meeting, but I think that's because we all agreed to change it to a CUP, but that's not still currently how our code reads. And so I just want to clarify, did we want to leave it as a use by right or change it to a CUP? Cause I, I thought that when that concern was brought up, we all kind of were like, well, we don't mind it being a conditional use permit if you're trying to run above ground transmission right lines.
I'm sorry. So this is clarifying that transmission lines above ground are used by right or transmission lines in general?
Transmission lines. Well, this says above and below ground, but I'm, I'm pretty sure the concern was mostly with the above ground stuff. And it's currently in our use table to be a used by right, um, in our proposed. But in one of the zone districts, it would have been a conditional use permit to do anyway, like if, if the zone district had stayed the same. So I kind of remember the discussion going towards whatever. We're fine with having them below ground, but I might have misunderstood. And or just want clarification to make sure that we have it the way we talked about it and everybody. Nobody listed it as a concern tonight, but I want to make sure it's because we're all moving the right, the same direction.
Um, I might just add to Heather that, um, what we're talking about are utility, like major utility lines. We're not talking about, so code says you have to have your own utility lines if they were even present on, um, a back country build. Those have to go underline, uh, underground, excuse me. And so this is only talking about a major utility coming in and putting in service lines. This isn't your individual, um, property utility lines. Just, just to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's super helpful. So if, uh, if Excel Energy wanted to put in a huge, I mean, they'd have to get the easement and all that anyway. But anyway, just as an example, huge power lines, this says that it would be a conditional use permit. Or, or actually I should take that back. Power says it would just be allowed without a conditional use permit. I'm, I would probably err more on the side of, uh, what Commissioner Fidler had said, which was make it a conditional use permit. But what are other people's thoughts on that?
I think it's totally reasonable and in line with a huge infrastructure project that they could go through that one extra step.
And do we, do we care if it's below ground? Should it still be a CUP if it's major below ground? And if they have the easement, do we, I don't know. Paul's saying, yes, we should. I mean, I don't care. I don't know really how often it's going to happen. So I'm not, I don't feel like this is something that's going to overburden us with conditional use permits if we want to put it in that way.
Above.
We don't feel like it's going to stunt any kind of important infrastructure. You know, then I think it doesn't hurt, harm anything to do a CUP.
Above ground or below ground. It doesn't really make much difference. It's going to be a significant imposition on the land.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and mark that we're going to change this to a CUP. Is that fit for everybody? I think we all felt pretty good about the wildfire protection and, um, mitigating things per the forest service plan. So I think that was good. I think everybody understands why it just wasn't possible to do a CUP versus a full zone change. So those are the things that we can take off of our list as far as focus topics. And then with what we have here, I think we have some really good conversation points to talk about, um, with the, the remaining items. I, um, I think the boundary review, uh, concerns involved some pretty good conversation from the commissioners. So I hate to have that conversation right now because I think some of the concern really came from the commissioners on that one. Um, so I'd like them involved in that conversation with us. Um, the gray water plans will want to have, I think Jackie's a really great resource for that. But if you guys want, we can kind of open up this conversation just a little bit to, to make next steps. So if we want to have at our next meeting, or if we want to have something where we invite Jackie or we ask for documentation via email or something like that from her that will help guide us as to what the appropriate, solution for us is going to be as far as the gray water, we can start that conversation. Does that feel reasonable to everybody? That's kind of next on our list here.
Would it be reasonable to bring in a third party? You know, someone that's helped other counties implement gray water plans. That might just know more about it and might have some examples for, from other places that, you know, could work or could be open for consideration.
This might be a discussion with the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. But I, I don't actually know that, but I think that Jackie is fairly adamant about keeping that kind of thing out of our zoning code. Which which is pretty consistent with the whole land use regulations is that you have to get a permit. But the land use regulations aren't concerning itself with what you're going to do to get a, a, a septic permit. That the environmental health department has its own process by whatever system there's going to be. That's not a land use issue. It is an environmental health issue.
Yeah, I agree with the say, the septic system, but more specifically the gray water only because it has been kind of by statute separated out from the septic.
That's if we, if we choose to implement our. Environmental health issue, not a land use issue. And because it's all going to be permitted by the environmental health department, not the building and land use department.
Okay.
Right. I think the, the confusion is that there's so many parts and pieces to how everything goes together. It, it, it is, you know, and it's, it's hard, but I, I think that for me, what makes the most sense is, for instance, this zone change that we're doing. We could change our land use, our land development code all the time, but we're probably still not going to change septic, gray water, any of those regulations nearly as often as Lake County Public Health is. And just like building code, like we don't typically reference specific building code in, in our land use code. We're just referencing that they need to meet building code or they need to get the appropriate permitting. Because otherwise our document would have to change just as often as the Lake County Public Health document. So I think that's where it gets really hard because when I first started talking to Jackie about, okay, what is the situation with gray water? Tell me about it. What's happening? It definitely sounds like it's a, it's a fairly sensitive topic because it sounds like there's been going back and forth between commissioners and departments as to who's going to man that and staff that and create that document and things like that. But all stuff that technically we have no, we as planning, we as land use department. We have a like, hey, this would be great if it was in place because it would fit really well. And we're going to have these new possible builds that would work really well for gray water system. And have us be like that kind of like, hey, we're a little bit of a push that whoever's business it is to do it should do it. But I don't know quite honestly, if I want to get into the politics of who I should be saying should do it. Just because it sounds like it's already kind of out there and being discussed between the appropriate departments. And I'm not sure that I feel like our department has a say in who does that and how they do it. I agree. I would like it to be in place because I think it would make things much easier and much simpler and, um, and working. But I also feel like in the meantime, this is a step in the right direction. And that hopefully, once this is implemented, they'll get tired of the variances just as much as anybody else. And also have some incentive to be pushing forward a gray water plan. I just worry that like we're almost putting our hands in something that we don't know much about and or have the authority to. But that's my own, my own personal thoughts on, on that specific situation. I do want to make sure it's super clear and as easy as we possibly can make it for people to do it the right way. So I'm not sure, you know, how to get there.
I, my concern is that we're conflating septic regulations with gray water regulations, which were not required to do. The, the septic regulations, totally environmental health. We have no touch on that. I agree that we don't have any authority on the gray water. The VOCC has direct authority on implementing a gray water plan, according to people I've discussed this with. So maybe that's going to be, you know, a non-issue after tomorrow and we're going to be discussing it tomorrow. I just would like to separate those two because I feel like this, this might be the right venue to discuss that. It may not be the right venue to pass anything or to get anything done, but because it's integral and part and parcel with this giant, you know, rezoning we're going to do. And we're going to be opening ourselves up to public comment on that. I, we're not going to be the first people to be asking these questions. And I think it's just something that needs to be clarified, especially if it can be clarified and, and kind of decided unilaterally. You know, not, not like the septic regulation. So.
Yeah.
No, I.
Septic.
I completely agree. I think it would be great to have that.
Paul, the statute separates them and allows you to, septic is black water.
Yes.
And you are allowed to treat them different and you're allowed to create a regulation that treats them separately.
Are you aware that dishwater is black water?
I'm not arguing what is and isn't black and gray water. I'm saying that we do have authority to define gray water regulations. And I.
I'm not sure that we do. I think that.
Well, sorry, we don't, we don't.
Planning Commission. Uh, uh, we just mentioned too, that, that, you know, we want to make sure that there's not a barrier in what we're proposing. And so I think when we heard from Jackie that every variance that's gone before the board since, uh, I think she went back a six-year span has been approved. And so there is a method by which currently, that, that sounds incredibly successful with a hundred percent success. That you, you know, variances, um, it, it really depends on your, on, on how prepared you are and how ready your design is to go before the variance process. The various process itself, you know, it sounds like about a 20-day period with a 45-day, um, notification period. So it's, it's pretty nimble. It just really depends on how quick your design is ready. Some people have to do a lot of revisions to it. So there is, so as it sits right now. Some people have to do a lot of revisions to it. So there is, so as it sits right now, it would be great for us to eventually have more options available, but at least there is something that we've set this this potential quota for success because there is a method by which to manage the sanitation. It may not be, you know, it can certainly be expanded and get much, much better like you you suggest, Bryce. But I guess I would just want to point out that that what's in place right now has a pretty good success rate.
Heather, I really liked your.
What I really like about this code or the idea of this of this happening is you know, that well, there's a lot of things that I'm sort of passionate about this for, but like, but one of them is that we've been working really hard over lots of years to try to get ahead of the ball with Leadville. And no matter how hard we've worked, we're never ahead of the ball, right? We're already we're already behind because there's already, we've been discovered. Everybody knows we're here and development's going to happen like crazy and we're just not moving fast enough. But I'm excited because I think this could be a good step in that direction. But I also hope that in that big step are these other little steps that advocate for those other things, right? And like, I was 100% serious when I was like, if we get this passed, I do think that it's not done. I think that that's when we do advocate for you know, the the county commissioners and or Lake County Public Health or whoever it is to make it so that the process runs smoothly because the whole reason we're going through all this crazy headaches is for it to be successful. And I think in order for it to be successful and truly successful, we're going to need some of those other things to happen after this is this is imposed. But I think, you know, obviously, step one is is here. However, we can make this gray water slash sanitation variances as easy as possible right now with what we have control over, I think is super important. And if that means we need to change some language or tweak some things, I think that's great. I just don't want this whole thing to be held up until a plan is created because I just don't know how how that would, how that would turn out for us. I think this kind of can be step one, and then it's an advocacy for, and I don't even think gray water is the only thing, right? I think there's going to be other things out there that once this, if if we get this zone passed, once it's implemented, I think there's going to be other things that come out of the woodwork that are like, oh, hey, we didn't think of this, or hey, this is a a great consequence that's come out of it. Now we can work on X, you know, like I just, you know, I think that there's a lot after this gets done that we're going to still need to be working towards. But I don't know. So I don't know if in the meantime, you know, how we get you know, what are what are everybody's thoughts as far as like how we should move forward? Are there changes that we should make to the way our code, our our proposed language is currently worded? Are there people, people here who feel like, you know what, until a gray water plan is in place, I'm not, I don't think that we should be passing this. But what are people's feelings as far as how this item here should be mitigated for people?
Heather, can I just offer one other maybe option for the group to think about? And that is, you know, this is, you're going to be moving a code amendment recommendation to the board. Could you simultaneously do a recommendation for them to consider the positive impact gray water plans would have on this policy to, you know, so so maybe bring to both a code recommendation forward and maybe a bit of a recommendation to advocate for that this would as long as, as long as, you know, there isn't a belief that we'd be stepping on any other department's hand of toes by doing that. But maybe that really speaks as a third option to really lifting up this concern and and wanting to recommend it to the board.
I love that idea. What are other people's thoughts?
That's a great compromise. It's like a, it's a package deal, you know? This is what we can do about this. This is something we think would be a great addition symbiotic part of this, but we can't do it.
Howard and Lupe, you both had your names next to this one, too. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, you know, Heather, the reason I picked that is because I personally don't know the difference between black and gray water. And I'd always figured that was really something that should be decided by the Department of Health. That they should make that determination. And and that's basically my thoughts on it.
Okay.
And what I want to say also, like, I agree with with everything that's been saying. I think it's just important to differentiate like what what public health does. And so Bryce brings up a great point because if we having this conversation, and if we're having these questions, what about the public? What what do they have to think about this? And I I think how and we're sharing that we shouldn't be stepping on toes for other departments, but just this is what we can do right now. And I think this is an important conversations because if we don't bring up this information, we don't bring up this conversation, as Bryce was pointing it out, I think it it was just like being complacent and there will just keep on having the same regulations and not talking about gray water plants or OWTS. And so I think that this is important to have a conversation. It it is going to be a long process, but if we want to make some changes, if we want to have conversations about this, this is a right opportunity to have this conversation and as and brought up, use that recommendation moving forward.
So I hear both, I I hear Bryce and Lupe that like, I guess this last sentence I'm just writing in the in the way that, you know, we're going to have this public comment come up a bit. So maybe between now and public hearing, we need to create something that kind of explains that, hey, this isn't in our purview, but instead we're doing this X, Y, and Z. And in the meantime, there are these variance options, but that we're going to advocate for this gray water plan for the county. And that's something that we can kind of put together as informational.
Exactly. Kind of just making known that we know it's it's an issue and we we agree and we want it to be solved as well. But we're just the planning commission. Or maybe not an issue, but we know it would come up. We know it's a it's a point that people are going to want to know more about.
But yeah, okay, perfect. Any other thoughts on that one before we move on? Okay, cool. Wildfire, skipping zone change impact on tax base. So I, if I remember correctly, this was a com- a conversation that came up as to how much it could change the property taxes on those properties when they turn into or when we change the zoning, I guess. And I think that applies to whether it's vacant land or not. Because currently vacant land is taxed at a rate of 29% of its value multiplied by the mill levy. The values in the in the current areas that these are at. They're not, they're not so much change, they're not so much, well, they're they're not supposed to be considered based on the actual zone district unless the zone district itself is impacting its use, right? So like mining mining industrial properties because there is a restriction on residential use and you're very limited on what you can do up there that obviously does change your value and you have to be comped with like properties, right? And so those values are different. Whether these properties are zoned backcountry or agrostry or residential, whatever we have them at, they're going to be comped on what's around them, what's really close next to them. So I don't know that our zone change technically changes it. But what it will do is it will, and I think where some of the concerns come came from are that you may see more vacant parcels turn into non vacant parcels because though they may have a small structure on it, right? And the small structure may not be big enough to account for the fact that you're now going from the 29% vacant land rate to the eight, seven, something percent rate of residential so that your your rate is going to drop. My personal argument to that is that I think the value will account for that difference because I don't think these properties are currently being valued that high to begin with. I think the values of these types of properties will actually go up a little bit and and everybody and their mother would like a cabin in the woods on a little stream, even if it's remote access. So I think that those values, I I would be surprised if we see a huge change in those values. But I think that there's just like, oh, there's a bunch of different perspectives on what that could end up looking like. And we do have a former assessor here that could weigh in on that conversation and whether he thinks there's going to be a big adjustment on our tax or impact on our tax base. I don't know if Howard wants to say anything, or if you guys who had some questions on that wanted to kind of chime in on what your, what your thoughts were.
No, I think you're 100% right. You know, the usage is the, once it's, once it's out there and people are aware, it's going to make their own value. So that's going to take care of itself in the long run.
Yeah, Heather, like I just wanted more of a clarification of the impact that it would have. And so that's why I just wanted to hear more information about how just like small structures out there and vacant land or vacant parcels and how would it impact their, the the tax base? And so that's, I just wanted more of a clarification.
Yeah. Does that kind of answer it? I mean, because it's a little bit confusing. So if they're vacant right now and they don't have any structure on them, they're taxed at that higher rate, and they won't be if they put something on it. But I still don't know if it's not a real improvement, Howard. Like, let's say it's a they're camping on it, or they put a yurt on it. Does a yurt go towards the value or does it stay taxed at vacant land? How does that work?
Well, I believe if they don't have a structure on it, it's not residential. So it would be at the vacant land.
Okay.
As soon as they get a permit to build a habitable structure on it, though, it does revert to, or as soon as they start building that habitable structure, it does revert to residential land.
Yeah. So it drops to that lower rate. But all of it depends on value, right? And so same within town here, if you buy a city lot, you're taking 29% of that city lot value. Let's just pretend that's 50,000, but then you build a house on it and maybe your house now is worth 300,000 and you're only taxed at the 7% rate. It kind of make, you know, it kind of makes up for itself. So I think there would be a lot of that. There may be a few parcels out there that end up where with a slight loss, but I think more than that will be a gain. So it it in my, in my opinion, it's not a noticeable enough difference that to me, even if it was a slight loss, it would be worth it. But I do, I would be surprised if we see a big loss out of, out of this. Me personally, I don't know how other people feel about that. Bryce, you're kind of involved down there, too. I don't know what your thoughts are.
I've done a lot of things. My personal thought is it's going to be a wash. We're never going to be able to, I don't think there'll be enough of an impact to really tell until this thing is so ingrained in the way we do things that it's just the way it is. So.
May I ask a question?
Definitely. Who is this?
This is Brian type. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to turn my camera on, but I can't figure. There we go. So, and I realize that the general consensus is that it's going to be a wash, but my question relates to if you're going to put in use restrictions on the occupancy of these structures, does it then automatically fall into residential? Because it's not going to be a full time residential occupancy. So how does that affect the tax assessment that this is going to be a restricted use? Or it seems like it's going to be from what I've read.
So not every structure that's allowed in the backcountry zone is going to be restricted, right? You're still allowed that other option to go to to build the full SFD. But the answer to your question, as far as what the assessor's office has historically done is that a residence is a residence and there there's no temporary occupancy concerns put in into that calculation as far as the state statute, you know, it's just if it's a residence, if it's occupied by the owner, even occasionally as a vacation home, it's still a residence.
Okay. I would just, it seems to me that a lot of the incentive is to encourage in this backcountry zone is to encourage the temporary use, the minimal use, the low impact use. So I guess I wouldn't to the extent that it makes sense, you know, just keep that in mind with respect to tax impacts.
Yeah, I mean, the the assessor's office generally is going to comp you with like properties. So you're going to be comped to like situations and like, like properties. So it's valued the same, if that makes any sense. But I think the assessors are, they're pretty bound to probably state and maybe even Howard National. I I don't know, but you're bound to regulations as to how you can assess things. And I don't think they have much leeway on on that other than just like properties and value them, valuing them based on that. Erin, did you have any questions or further information?
Again, personally, I kind of picked up on our last conversation about it at the end of the last meeting that it was going to be more of a wash. And I feel like it's worth worth it in this particular instance. I just brought it up again because someone had reached out to me and brought this up, and I just didn't want us not to discuss it. But no, personally.
What was that person's concerns? Was it a good or a bad thing?
They thought we would lose value. From what I gathered, I tried telling them that I am by far an expert on on any of that. So, but I just wanted us to discuss it more, or at least have that option to if they were inclined to do more research about it.
No, that's great.
Yeah, I feel like that's an argument we're going to hear. And I just, I'm really curious. I would love to hear it because I just can't see it right now.
I think it's basically from what I am remembering. This was a conversation two weeks ago. It was that same kind of the tax rate on the vacant land is a lot higher. And if we're going to allow for the structures, then it changes that. But I've also seen the value of land with structures skyrocket in the decade I've been up here. So I'm not like overly concerned. I I feel like for the little bit that I understand, we would get that value back from just growth in use eventually. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but like personally, again, I'm not overly concerned, but it was the vacant land versus it no longer being vacant land. That was, I think, the point. And I'm sorry, again, I, the phone call took me really by surprise while I was at work, too. So I I don't have it like verbatim.
No, that's great. I think this is helpful. Yeah, I don't anticipate. Yeah, I think it'll be okay. Um, I, and I think if we create this kind of like informational, like this is how it's calculated, and this is how we anticipate it likely being a wash. I think the more, you know, and and maybe it's just me, the more like infographics or whatever it is that we can give as like tangible information to give people, whether it's through email or handouts or whatever it is, the easier it will be to digest because I think it's a little harder to, especially on big Zoom meetings in a public hearing for people to really understand all of those pieces. So if we're able to provide that information in a different way, I think that would be super helpful. So I'm just trying to make some notes here of things that we can kind of create little pamphlets or whatever it is that we make sure we address these couple of things that we think we're going to hear a lot or want to make sure that we're answering adequately for people. Any other questions or conversation on that one? The grade concerns. And I know, and I feel like Bryce maybe can lead us a little bit more on this one, but it was about properties that were in that different grade and what that would look like. And you did some mapping on that. So.
Yes, I have a map. I thought, yeah, the map I have, you'll see the grading starts at 30%. And that was kind of the rule or the guideline we had gotten from the Forest Service for what their maximum recommended grade was.
And and just to revisit and put in everybody's mind, the site plan review also talks site specific to things like slope and hazard areas and environmental review. So the site plan is site specific to mitigate specific concerns at a different level. So the site plan is site specific to mitigate specific concerns at, at different locations. So there is the whole, um, site review process to make sure we identify hazards and they're properly mitigated before we would issue any kind of building permit.
So that, what, if that's in our site review, what initially brought up grade concerns?
I think grade concerns came, um, because we have, um, 20% slope in there. And so we wanted to, there was a question of whether 30 or 20, and I think we landed on 20. So, and that's, that's the standard that we have within, um, the site plan. So I think it was just a, a conversation back and forth about, um, there was also kind of grade concerns, I think, kind of enveloped also, um, building above tree line and some other kind of ideas. Um, so I think they all kind of got lumped into the same um, idea. But to me, I thought that we had kind of vetted grade concerns, looked at the site plan review with the ability to be site-specific and mitigate hazards and felt satisfied. So, um, but certainly open to, uh, any outstanding ideas or, or comments or concerns about it.
Did we put a actual specific number of degrees in the code? Twenty, I thought it was 30, but okay.
I muted. I'm just talking away. Um, let me double check the code, the draft. I think we put in, um, 20, but I'll double check it real quick.
I think we can take me and my comments kind of off there. I think I was confused about whether or not we were trying to push that envelope instead of reduce it.
Okay. Um, and while Anne's looking that up, were there any other, Howard, you had some concerns of that? Was there anything else that you wanted us to try to touch on and make sure we're clarifying on that?
No, Heather, the reason I put my name on that was I think I missed the, that meeting whenever you re, we discussed grade concerns. And I was thinking about avalanche, you know, areas like that. But if we've got a 20, 30 or 20%, then I don't think there's, I have a problem there.
Okay.
Does the site review take into account if you're below, um, avalanche terrain as well?
Well, I think the, you know, what I've seen from the Avalanche Council, they talk about, um, grades of 20%, 20 to 30% can become hazardous, primarily over 30%. So if we're talking about 20, we should be following whatever the Avalanche Control Guides are, I believe.
So what we have in, in the code is actually 30. I'm sorry, it is 30%. And then under geologic mining and environmental hazards, we have parcels or areas subject to geologic hazard shall not be developed for any use that might endanger health and safety, life or property unless the hazard can be eliminated or mitigated in a manner acceptable to the county. Geologic hazards included include, but are not limited to avalanche, landslides, rock piles, mud flows, unstable slopes or soils, ground subsidence, radioactivity, or any other environmental hazards. So we would, if we identify hazard and I'm sorry, is in no case exceed 30% slope. Um, and I do believe we did align that as you suggested, Howard. Um, but we would want, um, and, and generally, if we identify these kinds of hazards, um, any kind of mitigation, um, would be probably cost prohibitive for a site to even contemplate. I mean, you know, this, the kind of use that we're talking about probably isn't going to want to spend that kind of geo-hazard mitigation plan cost to, to do that. They've either moved their site or probably not built on it. So, um, yes, absolutely. So it's specific. We want to identify any known hazards and then properly mitigate them.
Uh, any other conversation on this one? Okay, cool. Um, so the super tricky conversation about road access easements and enforcement and how that all works. Bryce, I'm going to let you start this one off with, with your concerns.
Okay. And my concern is that we just don't have a thorough road inventory for the county at this time. Um, there's multiple departments have kind of conflicting ideas of what are county roads, what aren't county roads. Um, my GAS data is not thorough compared to what I've talked to Mike Irwin about and everything like that. So that's just a concern I have before we start opening it up is we need to define what parcels do have access, what parcels don't have access. Are we going to hold them to different standards? And then the whole, it's a different conversation. I guess we, we touched on it last time. It's probably just a more legal discussion of, you know, what people are supposed to do when they think they do have a road or think they do have legal access and someone else contests that. Oh, and then the other thing I really want to go to is, um, these people that I, I want people to be able to prove that they have an access easement because that's actually a comment I've gotten from a member of a public is, is that someone built a road to access his mining claim through his mining claim without getting his permission. And so to prevent that issue, you know, if the person can just prevent, provide that as part of their application, hey, I do have to go through this person's mining claim to get to mine. And just so you know, that's, that's fine with them as well.
So in talking with Erin, our land use attorney, this was kind of a, because this was, this is a conversation I've heard or a topic that I've heard a few times also, um, and I completely understand it. But something that she kind of, that rang true with me with what she said is that we can't be the decider of legal access either. So we can't be the decider of whether, because it's a private civil, civil matter as far as, um, especially going through other people's properties, the easements and such. So having the sign off on it, like in Anne and Paul jumping at any point if I'm misspeaking. But, um, my understanding was like, if we, if somebody had to provide a, an application, uh, they could mark a box that says, I have legal access. Um, but that we are not the, um, verifier, enforcer and/or any of those things, that if there ends up being an access dispute, um, for instance, a guy who like you described, had somebody build a road through his land, that becomes a civil matter. And as soon as the county starts getting involved in that conversation, then the county gets pulled into that matter as well. Um, and that's what we want, what she had recommended, we want to avoid is you don't want to give any perception that you are authorizing this access by including it as some sort of verification process through your application, because otherwise the county is taking the stance of verifying such legal access of which they don't have any means to do. So I think we have to be, that made me a little bit on edge about getting, getting it too detailed about it because it, it's other than county roads, it's not a, because it is a civil matter, then it become, I just don't want to open the county up for any kind of potential litigation down the road because I do know how tricky all these mining claims are and their accesses. And they've got to worry about getting legal accesses from easements from the appropriate parties and such.
So are you saying that legally we cannot consider access as part of our land use application?
I don't think she said we couldn't. And Anne, you can jump in too, because I may be.
No, I, I think you're, you're 100% right. I mean, so there's, there's, uh, there's times when, you know, we can definitely see if it's BLM or Forest Service and, and we need, we, you know, we know that, that we need to see, um, access, uh, permits from, from those entities to access. But when we put the reliance on the property owner that they have properly gone through, if it's private property that they, you know, we certainly can disclose to them, it is your responsibility to make sure that you have legal access to this property. And asserting to us that you do, um, if it's across private property, then, then we put that burden on them and it becomes their burden to maintain and make sure that, that it is, um, legal and they have that right. But we don't take it, when, specific to private property, we don't get involved in, in that with the burden of that is on the property owner to make sure that they have it at the time. Um, and unlike if it, you know, we can clearly see it, it's BLM or Forest Service. Those we want, you know, we're going to want to see those easement agreements, um, those, those legal access agreements because that's, that's within our purview. But when it's private property, we will disclose 100% to them that it is their legal responsibility to ensure that they have legal access. So when they apply, the burden is on them. And, and, and just like Heather said, um, our legal counsel told us that takes us out of the equation, just like when there's trespass issues or those are civil matters and they're not for us to, um, dispute or, or be the deciding factor on. So it, it's specific. What I heard was it's specific to the situation when they're crossing private property that we educate them as to the need and that by the time they apply to us, they have checked that box that they make sure that they have the legal right.
Another way to look at it, I think, is that if they're signing that attestation that like, I have legal access, then we're saying, okay, you're signing this thing that says you have legal access. If you're lying to us and you don't have that, that doesn't make us involved. We didn't verify it. It's not our job to verify. You've attested to us that you have that legal access. That burden is placed on them so that if there is a dispute in the future, we have another document to, to support that dispute that, hey, this guy thought he had legal access. All we're doing is issuing the building permit, um, based on this ass, attestation. So that took us out of enforcements, verifying easements, things like that. Because I think where, especially on these properties, it gets super tricky is, as, as you know, Bryce, there's like, on some of these mining claims, there can be 10 different owners. And who knows who's set up with whose partnership to grant an easement to their neighbor. And if Brother Joe doesn't like that Brother Steve granted this easement, that's a total civil matter that has nothing to do with the county, you know? And for us to try to like get involved in that dispute and deciding, is that a true legal easement or not? Isn't something that, that I, I think we can legally do and as well want to do. So I think where the private property goes, that rang the most true to me as far as we're just going to have, it's going to be the burden of that legal easement and legal access is going to be up to that homeowner and that, or a property owner. And if that property owner doesn't have it and it gets taken away from them, that's something they've got to work out, right? And it doesn't really involve the county. Um, and, and then where we're talking county roads, I think that you're right, that gets a lot trickier because I agree, different people think different roads are county roads and what defines which ones are maintained versus which ones aren't. And I think that question, I could see that question being something that gets brought up and can continue to be a point of contention, um, that we probably want to make sure either we partner with River and Bridge or, or whatever it is to, to identify and make sure that we understand that what for sure has the county recognized as public access roads and what haven't they? And I don't know what steps we go in that direction.
Well, I think honestly narrowing it down to just that set of issues, just the county road, just the maintenance issue might be just a great, you know, way to tackle this right away. We'll get something in place before this goes to the public. So that is something that I have on my list of something that I'm working with Mike with. Um, so maybe it's just something we can fast track so that we have at least that portion of it figured out before we go any further. Maybe the public roads issue and everything is totally separate from the county roads we can, we can get done. Because that is, I mean, there are some that are kind of up, you know, some people say they're a public road, thereby adverse possession. And some people say, no, that's a county road that's been recognized before. And so just getting that more, more clear, clear would be great.
Yeah, I think so, because I think that would help with the headaches that Anne and Paul have to face. If, you know, these come forward and they're like, well, yeah, of course I do. It's a county road. And somebody's like, ah, that's not a county road. I think it'd be good to just have that list available, um, because then if it's, no, that isn't one, or it's not Ben, uh, they know that it's going to be up to them then to make it a legal access for themselves and go through that process on their own. Any other ideas or thoughts on how we should approach this, other than that kind of identify that list?
That makes the most sense to me. I was just more interested in kind of hearing more about it. So the way that you guys just talked it out makes sense.
Steve, how are you feeling on that?
You know, I'm kind of thinking, uh, refer to County Road and Bridge was probably be the best bet and it'd be the most accurate. I think that would, uh, that would take the, uh, the best route, uh, if someone wanted to build. And then they can get, uh, for sure answers and accurate answers from County Road and Bridge and what, you know, what Bryce was saying. Is this a road? Is this a county road? What was this in the past? I think they would get accurate answers if they were to, uh, go to that department.
Well, and just so everybody knows, we do that pretty regularly. We, we weigh in with, um, Public Works. You know, there's a resolution out there, oh, six 21, what, that when a designated road dissects a parcel, it creates an exempt subdivision. So we are, we already have, um, a situation where we're always calling and asking Michael, hey, you know, is County Road whatever, or this road, is that a designated county road? So that it fits within that, that resolution. So, you know, I think those, those collaborations already happened at the time of um, administering land use and administering building permits. So, but to have something that we could all easily access and all be on the same page with, that would be amazing. So super excited to hear that, uh, that you're working on that, Bryce. That's awesome. That is super helpful.
Hi, that's Sarah Hornet.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Turn now the aftermath of those devastating.
Um, okay. Do we have any other conversation on that particular topic? Anybody wants to, what we want to think about? And then is there anything we're missing, you know, as far as things that we think we need to have more dialed in for public comment for? I don't know, concern, anything else out there that people are like, hey, we haven't thought of this yet?
Well, that's exactly it. I'm, I'm wrapping my head around like, what are people going to bring up that we haven't even thought of?
And I think that's okay. I mean, I, I, I welcome that. And I think, um, that's sometimes the best part of this process is kind of getting all the different perspectives that show up. Especially when we've been working for, for so long on it, sometimes you just get so sucked into it, you forgot, um, you know, what the, what outside looking in is like. So I think that's okay. If we don't have all the answers, I think it'll just be something that if, if things get brought up in the public and we're like, whoa, yeah, that makes us pause and hey, we don't have a good answer for that, then we know that we're not going to push it forward right away. You know, that first public hearing doesn't have to be the, we're moving this forward or it's dying situation. So I kind of welcome that. I mean, I, and I expect that we're going to have some questions that we hadn't thought of. But hopefully we've thought of, we've got a lot of, a lot of good minds here from a lot of different places within the community. So I'm hoping we've at least tackled most of the major ones, um, especially if we can get through a couple of these others.
I got a crazy question.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead. Who is that?
Uh, Boyle here. I got a crazy question. Uh, and everything that was covered, did anybody, uh, even bring up anything about effect on wildlife? Has that been a concern or something any, uh, some people would ask about?
I believe that Anne talked about it with the Forest Service, so I'll let her answer that.
Yeah, we had a meeting with Pat Mercer, and kind of went through it, so I have sent this out to other stakeholders to take a look and give us feedback. And so, but I do think that's a good point, Steve, we could certainly send it out to Department of Parks and Wildlife, too, and, and just see if they have any other thoughts about it, but I think that you have to remember that what we're, the direction we are going is, is taking away some of, well, the intent is to take away some of those big impacts to things like wildlife. So, we are creating with this more of a preservation and conservative approach to the backcountry than to increase the amount of impact. This whole intent is, is to make something that would probably be more conducive versus, you know, the thought that, like, I don't know if anybody read the Peking County article that I had sent over, and I think they superimposed in their backcountry what it might look like right now, had they not done those backcountry regulations, and kind of the many mansions that would have gone and, and along their hillsides and their vistas. So, I think that, that's a really good point, and I certainly will get it out to Parks and Wildlife, and have them, it's great to have these early conversations and anything that might come out of that, so we have talked to the Forest Service, but I do think that the whole intent is to try to think more of something that would maybe embrace that kind of setting more than have big negative impacts, which I think is the desire to get ahead of the development trend that we are seeing, and it's coming fast and furious.
Okay, well, it doesn't, do, Bryce, did you want to still have the conversation about the ninety-one twenty-four thing, or do we want to wait?
Yeah, I think unless someone here has a concern with it, we can wait, I don't have any concerns with it, I just want to go over it, so that I kind of know if there's any edits or revisions I should be making. I think it was one of the commissioners that was more concerned about that, so maybe we can wait.
Yeah, I remember our discussion last meeting, I kind of was like, I don't necessarily care either way about whether or not you included that connector.
Yeah, I think just for everyone here, and I think I've explained this before, but my intention was to include, there was just a few mining claims that had been left out of the original boundaries, and I was just trying to include everything that had historically been zoned, that recreational mining claim that we've been talking about, you know, so, trying to include everything that had been classified as that as well.
Yeah, and I think I'm, I'm, I'm probably more in favor of just including them than not, mostly just because I don't, I don't anticipate many of those based on their topography, other than, I guess there is partially, part of that, some of that stuff that's over on the White Mountain side, on the east side of ninety-one, on that bend, that is a little bit more flat and easily accessible, that maybe that wouldn't be appropriate to limit them from a larger single-family home. That was the only piece that I was like, eh, but the stuff over on the Buckeye side, I felt like that could all be included in this, but I'm also, you know, not nearly concerned with those properties over there, one way or the other. In, in with this conversation, we talked briefly about the group of claims over by Turquoise Lake, too, and whether we include those or not.
Yeah, and I kind of considered, we had discussed that, and I thought we, it's like, you know, we have to, is, in the interest of being equal and equitable, we need to just treat it as recreational money, claim basis of who owns it and its current use.
Yeah.
Just to be fair.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally in agreement with that, and if a large property owner wants to annex themselves out, then they can come forward with that proposal, but I think that makes the most sense to me, anyway, as far as, I agree, we keep it equitable, like, these properties are here regardless of who owns how many of them, so. Okay, anybody else have any other questions or comments on that section?
No, just Heather, and you and Bryce were just talking about it, since I left the conversation pretty early, I just wanted to know how their plan is gonna play out, but, yeah, I could wait and just hearing what the other planning commissioner, well, the county commissioner had to say about this topic, and I'm just, I'm curious to see the map that Bryce, you built, and how it's gonna play out.
There's the map, Lupe, if you just want to look at it, you know, as much as you want before the next meeting, whatever, there's a few layers to play around with and everything like that, but just a good place to start.
Thanks for doing all the mapping stuff, Bryce, it's been super, super helpful.
That's my job, I love doing it, so.
Well, it's been really, really helpful, so I appreciate that, for sure. So, kind of just trying to get a grasp on what our next steps should be, right? It should be nice to move this forward to public hearing before we're in the middle of summer craziness, and I know we've got development applications that are likely coming our way. And obviously, balancing that with making sure that we have a really good presentation first, in the, in the appropriate data. I know Bryce is gonna work on some of the road stuff, and if you need any help with that, if you can, feel free to reach out to any of us. Now, I don't know if we can be of help, or if you need to delegate anything out. I know Erin has volunteered to help me do some of these infographic things, to put together some information. What are any other people's thoughts, as far as what do you think we need to do before we can take this to public? I really wanted to get, I'm bummed the commissioners aren't here, because I really wanted to get their answers to these questions, to make sure that, you know, we're we're, they're, they're along with us here in this process, so I may go ahead and send this list of questions to them. Maybe with just our comments in there, as far as what our thoughts are for, for mitigation of them, and just see if I can get any, any good responses that way to help guide us, but it, but do anybody, does anybody have any other thoughts of, hey, we really should be doing this before we go to public, are there anything that we're, we don't have mapped out here that we need to be working on before we go to public hearing?
So, Heather, there's, there's one thing that Paul and I are working on behind the scenes, and that's the application of the building code. Brian has brought our last meeting, he brought up some specific concerns about the energy code, and as we adopt the new code section version coming up of the eighteen code, we are going to have some concerns about the energy code. So, we are further exploring that, and asking our code experts to kind of help us navigate a couple of questions that are outstanding on that, and so we, we just didn't think that we had enough great answers yet, or even information yet, to bring tonight, so we're working on that, and hopefully, by the next time, we will have some better answers about specific to the energy code, and how we're, how, what we find out after we talk to code officials about that.
That's awesome, no, that makes total sense. That's another piece that we forget about that you guys still need to deal with, so I, yeah, I guess if we, if adjustments need to be made, we need to consider those as well. Any other thoughts from folks about things that we need to consider before public hearing time?
I would just be really curious about, I mean, there was a lot of stuff brought up in our previous meeting that wasn't necessarily brought up again today, because people just aren't in here. So, I'd be curious to see if anything were to kind of change what informational pieces we want to put together, because I do think having some good graphics and breakdowns of what's happening would be really important. Or helpful, I should say.
I totally agree, yeah, and I, obviously, we have to, I don't think I can like, email everybody any kind of responses, but maybe what I'll do is, any responses I'll get with staff on, and add to this list, and I'll just revise this list, and staff can send that out to all of us, so that we know what all the current outstanding issues are, and/or issues that we want to make sure we're addressing for public information, to see if that brings up any other new questions, and then if, if people think of new questions and/or concerns in the meantime, or hear from people, again, I want to keep encouraging people to, you know, if there's members of the public that are excited about this, or not excited about this, or what are, all, all of the different avenues, you know, we want them here in a part of this conversation, so direct those to Anne, and then we'll make sure we incorporate them into the next meeting, any of those questions and concerns. And on that note, if there are any members of the public who want to make any kind of quick comments or questions, anything like that, that, we welcome that. Well, if anything, please send them to Anne, sorry, go ahead, Anne.
Sorry, so two things, I'm going to go into our draft and change transmission lines to conditional use, based on our conversation. Thank you, Steve, for bringing up Parks and Wildlife as a stakeholder that we could further vet this with. On the very front end, and you know, we've been doing this for several, several years, I think, five at least that I can think of, and I know way before I joined the county, so we did kind of do a survey out to, and I think Parks and Wildlife at that time, to everybody, but if anybody else thinks of, I'll go through and see who we identified at that time as stakeholders, that I can get it in front of, just to see if we have any additional input or unthought, you know, things that we haven't thought about that we should consider, and if any of you want to email me, if you can think of someone that you think should see the draft, that might be able to weigh in from their perspective, that would be great, because it has been a period of time since we've had those conversations.
Agreed. Well, and things have morphed so many times over, over the years, so it's, it'd be nice to get everybody on board with what our current idea and plan here is, and make sure we're addressing any concerns. All right, well, I mean, we have thirty-five minutes left, if somebody wants to come up with something else you want to talk about, or we could just end it early. Early night. Okay, if anybody comes up with anything, again, please, please, please send them to Anne, if citizens, please direct them to, we want the feedback, good or bad, so. I will get this sent off, I'll edit this and send it off to the commissioners for some feedback from them, and then I'll have Anne send out a revised version once we get it. Bryce, if you need anything from anybody in the meantime, please, please reach out, happy to help.
All right, awesome, thank you, Heather, for making this list and everything, I think this was a really good conversation tonight, and really helped us all clarify our issues and everything like that, so. Great.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Heather, I think this was a great meeting tonight.
Good, thanks. Erin, I'll, I'll reach out to you, and we can chat once we have some of that feedback back.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you, everybody, oh, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for participating, have a good night.
Thank you.